Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten forty-two AM and they call this meeting to order. Welcome to everyone here in the committee. Welcome to everyone on the call. Today is September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. We had a proposal agenda posted for ten AM this morning to consider on legislation and the weather reports. Today we are excited to have a conversation about our budgets. And we welcome our speaker and also our chief justice here this morning. Thank you all for being here. The rich cheese of Navajo Nation, welcome. All right, Mr. Tommy, did you take an official roll call this morning?
Madam Chairman, this is the Budget Finance Committee. This is roll call for the Budget Finance Committee. The twenty-fifth Navajo Nations Council Special Meeting for September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call. Honorable Jean Dean Parish.
Present.
Honorable Jean Dean Parish is present. Honorable Carl Ross Slater. Excuse. Honorable Norman Ambigini. Excuse, excuse.
Okay.
Honorable Henry Chris Procarie.
I'm for the.
Honorable Henry Chris Garris, President. Honorable Sherman Yasi.
I'm here.
Honorable Sherman Yasi is President. Honorable Lester C. Ali.
I am President.
Honorable Lester C. Ali is President. Madam Chairman, your former president was coming to the throne for the special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy, for taking the official roll call and good morning to everyone again for this morning's meeting. Let's begin our meetings here with a short indication and yes, some questions. So we are taking a look at our email and there are some questions for our office. Let's kind of come a bit. But look out for it fair. Lord, I thank you for this day. I look forward to the opportunity to serve the Navajo Nation or Navajo people. Today, we come convening for the Budget and Finance Committee and ask for guidance and wisdom over the discussions that we have today. I also ask for peace in the decisions that we have to make. Today, I pray for our speaker, our chief justice, the justice across the nation, members of the twenty-fifth Navajo Council, our president, our vice president, and those that are making decisions today on behalf of our nation, Lord. I also ask blessings of our Navajo Nation employees for the work that they do to provide services to our people. Today, I also ask for safe travel to my colleagues all over the nation that are going to and found their homes. I also pray for those support systems that are back at home, that maybe continue to provide a place of rest for each and every one of us. I also ask today for guidance and wisdom for our staff as well. Our Office of Legislative Services, Office of Legislative Council, the Speaker's Office, our LDAs, and all of our support staff. I ask blessings during this time and I pray things can change. All right, so let's continue on with our agenda. We take an official roll call. We, Mr. Tommy, do you have the Department of Justice on the call?
We have the Department of Justice on the call, Mel Rodes.
All right, good morning to Mel Rodes. Do we have the Attorney General on the call?
We have Attorney General Jean Dean Jones on the call.
All right, good morning, Ms. Jones. We have the, we do have Ms. Janica here. We have Office of Leadership, Office of Legislative Councils here, Michelle, you know. We also have Office of Legislative Services here. Is the Office of Manager and Budget involved?
Manager, Office of Management Budget is not on the call.
Could you alert the Office of Management and Budgets that we are discussing in amendment to the comprehensive budget? All right. Thank you, Mr. Tommy. With that, I will recognize our bridge, she is a representative. Today, we have Speaker Chris Lynn Curley and our acting chief justice, Ms. Eleanor Shirley. Thank you for being here. And I think it was Heather Duncan. Are you representatives from the effect of the branch?
I'm just here, yeah.
Are you or Mr. Joe Largie for representative? Do we have OKD on the call? Okay, I just want to check. Mr. Chris Peter had notified us that it's Mr. Largie that's so contacted me now, but if you're going to say it today, we'll acknowledge you. All right, let's continue to review and adopt the agenda. Mr. Tommy, could you read the proposal agenda to the record?
Madam Chairman, this is the Budget Finance Committee. The proposed agenda reads as follows. Budget Finance Committee, the twenty-fifth Navajo Nations Council Special Meeting, September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, ten AM. Presiding Honorable Jean Dean Parish, Chairperson Honorable Carl Ross Slater, Vice Chairperson, Location Budget Finance Committee Conference Room. One call, meaning to order roll call invocation. Two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journal. None. Five, receiving reports. None. Old business. None. Seven, new business. A, legislation number zero two one nine dash two five. An actual name to the Budget Finance Committee, the Nunkit Committee, the Navajo Nation Council, amending CES dash forty-four dash twenty-five, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-six comprehensive budget. Montos, honorable Chris Lynn Curley. Eight, closed amending announcements in a German. Madam Chairman, this is Budget Finance Committee. That is the proposed agenda run into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy. Members of the committee are motion. Motion by Honorable Emma Kness, the party's associate. Backed by Delegate Shirley Yasi. Members of the committee are ready amendments to today's agenda. Hearing them at this time. Let's go to Delegate Shirley Yasi. Delegate Shirley Yasi votes for it. Member Kness, the party votes, probably predicted with. Shudder, Sharon, and Emma Kness, the party votes for it. And Delegate Lester Yasi, how do you know? Delegate Lester Yasi votes for it. You have three members voting, or two members accepting themselves and not voting in motion carries. You have no journals to the doctor here today. You have no reports, no old business, but we go on to new business, legislation two one nine seven five. We're gonna run a very, very quick identity today because our chief justice has some appointments this afternoon. So we'll be curating some time especially. Okay, I want to recognize Vice President, Rashawn. Everything's a bit.
Yeah, can sit with here too.
For Sean, Sean gets it up there and then.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Sean, he's thirty.
Oh, it's it up here.
Yeah, but we're here.
Hey, Mr. Tommy, to read that title to their.
Madam Chairman, the Budget Finance Committee, you have legislative summary for cracking numbers zero two one nine dash two five, date September eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Settle the resolution, and actually lead to the Budget Finance Committee's, I would get committee in the Navajo Nation Council, amending CES dash forty-four, dash twenty-five, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-six comprehensive budget. The purpose of this resolution is to mention the fiscal year twenty-six comprehensive budget, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation. We're trying to set a record for the entire. You have attached the first report for Navajo to legislative branch and a public review summary for legislation number zero two one nine dash two five. This legislation was posted on September eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, at ten, eleven, ten PM, which applies to our period end, also November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. You have five comments supporting this legislation and one comment writing data on this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy, for reading the proposal third, for reading legislation two one six, two one nine two five, it's a record. Under the meeting, is there motion to consider the legislation, motion by Joe and Emma Kness, the party, you have a second? Second by Delegate, I'd like to have the President of the Budget and Finance Committee. When we went to a presentation, before we did some presentation, I wanted to check on their staff. Commerce and Legislative Council, I'm really curious about any opposing lines of this legislation. But yes, I do have the proposed amendments of Delegate Yassim. Okay, and that would be good. I'm working on that right now and how many wishes my allow. All right, okay. And Mr. Tommy, does anyone need, as you know, those good comments? Would you all not speak to that? You're in front. That's what I'm gonna ask him. Did you all have, we got a digital comment. Mr. Tommy, can you send out the digital talking post comments? Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna go to. Speaker Curley, for the record, we do have Eldeste Montaire, Office of Management and Budget, welcome, people. All right, Speaker Curley, Lawrence, you're still.
A Budget and Finance Committee, although for the chair, Madam Chair, Parish and honorable community. Committee members of the Budget and Finance Committee, although I bet that I saw, he felt yachting, he's a mission soul. By the influence, mission deep, I got a felt, maybe of our employees that are here, although for those. Thank you, acting chief justice, for being here as well, although for just a small, Vice President Rashad Montoya. It was, he thought he could, with the, it's a washing, dish and pizza, they don't have his, I mean, he thought he was supposed to be. Zero two one nine dash two five, in his title amending CES four four dash two five, FY two thousand six comprehensive budget. And this resolution was passed September fourth, earlier this month, just to give some historical context. After the budget was approved, it was forwarded to the President and Vice President. The President did sign the budget into law with a twenty-two point eight three million in line item debits. On September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, they're leaving those funds unappropriated. Legislation zero two one nine dash two five real allocates a portion of these funds to address unmet operational needs in the legislative and judicial branch. So here we do have acting chief justice who could also provide a summary of her operational needs that are in line within her branch. The purpose of this legislation probably says to restore critical funding for the legislative branch and also judicial branch so that we can continue to operate starting October first, two thousand twenty-five. And it also reinforces the balance of powers and ensures that both branches are adequately resourced with staff and also operating needs. Again, for the legislative branch, there is a, within this bill, it is an allocation of eight eight million one hundred thousand two hundred and sixty-three. It's also important to note that the eight point, eight, or the eight point one million owing conference operating budget for all of the standing committees, we do have Budget and Finance Committee that is outlined at sixty thousand. Health Education Human Services Committee at eighty thousand. Resources and Development Committee at eighty thousand. Law and Order Committee at seventy thousand, and the whole Committee of Nunkit, which has compromised of the twenty-four council delegates at five hundred and thirty-three thousand. This is essential, probably except the operating hours for our standing committees be restored by law in Title II. It does state that each of our committees are bound by law to meet several times a month. And that should also include your operating costs to accomplish your competitive goals, the duties and the responsibilities that are statute underneath Title II. Also, a part of the eight, eight point eight one million is for support offices and programs. We do have Office of Legislative Services at one hundred and five thousand. The Navajo Youth Advisory Council, two hundred and forty-five thousand, this. Under the same session that we did have here in the first week of September, the council did entertain and override legislation. So currently, the plan of operation and the duties and responsibilities underneath the youth council is now transition officially over to the legislative branch. So this new council does have a plan of operation put in place. So currently, that is underneath the legislative branch. And to give, this Navajo Youth Advisory Council is the only unmet need that is from the last comprehensive budget that we drew because it does include operating dollars. And next is our Legislative District Assistance Program of approximately two point three million. Two weeks ago, I had to send layoff notices to our twenty-eight employees that this consists of. Uh, the two weeks ago, I had to send, uh, layoff notices to our twenty eight employees that this consists of also one. Regular status employee underneath the Office of Legislative Services. So many of our liaise and the chapters and has been an outcry for many of our chapters to restore the spending. Since they do have that direct communication between the delegate and also the chapters. And next we do have the legislative personnel adjustment pool that was created by this committee that was also line item vetoed. At a little over one million dollars. And other legislative branch offices includes the whole Navo Nation Council at two million. The Office of the Speakers Operating Budget at four hundred seventy eight thousand. And Office of Legislative Council at one million dollars. For the total of the eight million, uh, one hundred thousand two hundred and sixty three. Uh, any of the budget forms that are included in the legislation. Did not change from what was approved by council. So when you look at the budget form, they should be the same, uh, number mountain purposes, uh, as it was filled out in the comprehensive budgets. So that was supported by the council as a whole, however, it was line item vetoed. So at this time, I would like to give some time. To, uh, Acting Chief Justice to also give a summary of her, uh, program need of operating. And we'll turn over the floor also for additional comments to our Madam Vice President.
Good morning, that's a point to the Chair Parish and members of the Budget Finance Committee. I go in the legislative staff, then, uh. Speaker Curly, yeah, and then, uh, I see, uh, sorry. Uh, good morning, and then at this point in time, I thank you for giving, uh, judicial branch and other committees for company for. The Budget Finance Committee, I have with me, um, staff from the judicial branch, which I'd like to. Uh, introduce to you at this point in time, I have Miss Helen Brands. She is the new, uh, finance, uh, financial director with the, uh, the, uh, the branch of the judicial branch. And then also with, with me is the, um, Cecilia, um. Thomas, she is, um, a person that worked with us on the unmet needs and she is. With the, um, Navajo Supreme Court. I also have Andy Thomas, who is here also on behalf of the judicial branch and respect to, uh, facilities and instructions. So those are the individuals that I have with me and I want to add to, uh, members that are in. Uh, of the legislative branch, I send my good morning to you and then also to, uh, Controller. Yeah, he has, he has it, uh, at this point in time, as I was. I've heard, uh, the presentation, uh, speaking, uh, the judicial branch is also. In a situation where I would help you for you in asking for, uh, allocations in the amount of nine hundred and forty one thousand seven hundred and thirty two. And this particular amount consists of all of the, uh, operating, uh, maintenance, uh. That we would need in order for the branch and the district courts to, to operate. Um, as you know that, um, the judicial branch, um, its core services is making sure that, um. That there is, uh, access to justice by the Navajo people that when there's ever a need for legal issues or legal, um. Pursuing that needs to occur that they are Navajo people that have, um, born to, uh, file their petitions and their duties to. And then at the same time, it's also a branch that delivers its service in return by adjudicating. The cases that come before them, so it's also heavily at access to justice, but also a, a delivery of that material. Um, access, uh, of just, uh. Of justice to the Navajo people, uh, in doing so, um. I thank the, uh, Budget Finance and the people their support in the past with respect to the group. The appropriations and the recommendations that you've made with respect to, uh, the vacancy pool. And also with respect to the, um, the step and where we increase as well as the funding for the appropriate, uh, issues and the public cases that relates to. Uh, how our Navajo people are, um, wanting to have different, uh, types of issues resolved within the. Uh, with respect to their, to their situation. Now going more specifically to, to the, um, to the branch's needs here, we have, um, a. A listing of all of the branch that needs, uh, operating costs and may start beginning with that. Channing Judicial District, which is a business unit one zero two zero zero two of eighty six thousand three hundred one. And then next there's Port Point Judicial District, which is business unit one zero two zero zero three, uh, fifty eight thousand zero eight one. Um, the next one is Winera Judicial District, uh, around twenty three thousand two hundred and fifty one. Um, the ship rock judicial district is an amount of six to seven thousand six hundred and twenty. And Jewish city judicial district is a hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty two. Um, Reha is the next, uh, district, uh, judicial district of twenty thousand eight hundred and forty nine dollars and Pianta. Judicial District of seventy one thousand four hundred and twenty one. Uh, Delcon Judicial District of seven thousand four hundred and ninety one and then Anna is the judicial district of one thousand five hundred dollars. Almo Judicial District is in need of twenty four thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars. Um, now, these are the courts that are out there and throughout the Navo Nation. We also have what we call the central, uh, the administrative office of the court, uh, which is a business unit of one zero two zero zero one. Of a hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighty eight. The Supreme Court is seven thousand three hundred and ninety nine. Uh, he's making his program is ninety four thousand one hundred and forty dollars and probation services are hundred and seventy eight thousand two dollars. Uh, we also have this official conduct commission, which is not necessarily within the branch itself, but is considered to be an independent body. That reviews and makes a recommendation of judges applicants. Uh, as well as the associate justice and the chief justice, so we also have a budget need of eight thousand nine hundred and two. These are the needs that we have, that we need in order for judicial branch to operate and in order for the judicial branch to. Provide services to the Navajo peoples, uh, that are in need of various types of, uh, legal services and so forth, so. Uh, at this point in time, I need to say that these, uh, of this, these amounts that are stated are basically the same. That was, uh, that is obviously unmet needs, uh, budget that was previously presented before the Budget Finance Committee and also at the time when. Now the Navo Nation Council was reviewing the entire budget at the time, uh, and. Um, and so that's where we're at right now and we're, um. I come before you in requesting for your support. Uh, for these, the necessary funds that we need in order for the branch to carry out its services and. And at this point in time, the operating costs, I mean, this is exactly what we need because it covers. Not only the work and compensation, but also for our, um. Insurance premiums for our vehicles, you know that, for example, Kieta, Kieta has a mobile port. And Kieta drives out to, um, Navajo mountain. To areas that are usual areas to where they provide services and without the vehicle. We are not in a position to provide any contact with those people that are out there in order to provide those services. So those are things that we need to take into account that these are essential, um, for the services that we need to provide. In order to fulfill our own, uh, goals and our own expectations and delivering those services to the people. The other part is knowing that, um, another example is appropriation and role legal. And work with individuals out there to, uh, provide the, the, the services, uh, restore to, uh, justice in. Getting the individual back on the, on the right path and having them become productive and being able to have a stable, um, life. Again, and so forth, so those are things that, um, our staff is essentially providing. As, as, as staff and services to the people, so I just wanted to bring out to you some of these things that, that, um. Is gonna be urgent and unable for us to, uh, to not, uh, provide those, um. Those type of services without the needed funds that were simply asked before at this point in time. So if you saw a, uh, maybe. Um, I don't, uh, yeah, the administrative office of the court as well as us as a separate court, so. Um, I know that those are the essential services that we need and we need the necessary funding for our branch again. Um, we respectfully request you for your support for our requests on our unmet needs at this point in time, thank you.
And the committee, I know where we are at on time under twenty minutes, but if we could allow also our Madam Vice President to introduce herself. Yeah, with the Acting Chief Justice, though, with the Madam Vice President for. And at this time, colleagues of the committee, uh, this legislation as a whole, it does, uh, provide. A proper funding, uh, as you know, within our legislative branch, we do not have any operating funds that includes our I E C, so including our insurances. Uh, supplies needed for meetings, so it is, uh, everything across the board has been impacted. So however, uh, this legislation was drawn to prioritize our people's needs, our communities' needs, our chapters' needs. I know pretty sure that on a daily basis that you do get phone calls left and right from our community members attending chapter meetings. Asking for amendments to the laws and all of that. You know, has been, uh, challenged as coming October first. And many of you already have legislation requests to amend portions of the law supplemental requests and. To make it that into reality as of October first, we would have to put a clause. And then reiterate back to our community members, okay, maybe is there a way that how we can start, uh, doing our duties and part of Title Two? So it does hinder some of our statute for requirements that we are supposed to do at the local officials. And I'm disrespectfully are requesting that those operating dollars are restored. And also just thinking about our twenty eight employees that are now, uh, in distress of trying to either look for new jobs or, you know. Having that feeling that each and every one of us that we do find out solution for them. So again, thank you for hearing this legislation this morning, we stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, Speaker, with some fairly, uh, Acting Chief Justice Shirley, uh, President, Michelle Montoya. For small meeting of the Budget Finance Committee, you do have a motion and a second and I'm like a station two one nine two five. Although to the committee for questions. I'll go to the delegate Shirley Hasi first.
Good morning, everybody, thank you for being here again, um, let me discuss and talk about the people's money and, you know, making sure that. Uh, we're all doing the best that we can, um. To make sure that our people have programs and services and so I appreciate that very much, very much legislation. In the table, and so that we can have another opportunity to have some more consultation. Um, I did, um, offer some amendments to this and I know, um, our legal counselor is working on it, so I just wanna make sure that. Um, I don't know if it's ready, you offer me that? Um, so one of the things that I do want to make sure that I'm clear about, um, about the series of legis, um, sorry. Series of amendments that I'm going to introduce. Um, it will be about restoring the people's trust and safeguarding every single dollar that really does belong to them. Um, we have heard loud and clear from our communities, um, you know, how much transparency they want from our government and how much accountability. It means to them to know how we are spending all of our funding and how services get to them. And they are tired of our political pains, um, and any kind of shadow spending, spending. Um, so that's why again, I'm gonna offer these amendments, the practical, what's called, uh, kill switches to protect the nation's resources, no matter who's going to be in our office. Um, in our positions, in our political positions, we're gonna be about protection and. And some of the language is basic, if someone can't provide a report, the funds will be paused. Um, if there's illegal contracting, the funds will be frozen. There is lots of challenges, this legislation, the funds will be held until it is resolved. So I'm not here to weaponize the budget and I know the Budget Finance Committee has worked very hard. You know, with many individuals to understand how our money flows throughout our government. And as a new member of the budget, we've also seen where, um, again, budgets are being had, how it's not being used properly. And so as a committee member, I'm doing my best also to safeguard it. And our people do not deserve this money to go into a flat hole and disappear. They want daylight, they wanna make sure that our ends are clean and they want strong enforcement, so. Those are gonna be the amendments that I'm going to propose today, um. So let's make sure that the money we appropriate is respected, reported on and responsibly spent. So those are going to be my, my comments and I'll just wait until my amendments are ready, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Shirley Hasi, uh, for your thoughtfulness this morning, I know that many, especially committee members have been working, um, to. Prepare their comments for this morning, so. I'm, I'm grateful for this committee and, and we have to offer so. Uh, Chairman, everything for values, the face comments of what. For the control, for the control, alright, Chairman, everybody, whatever it is, okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, Speaker, um, Curly, uh, Sean Mont, um. Attorney Chief Justice, uh. The V J Vice President Montoya, appreciate, uh, that you're here. And you have this pretty big document, um. Kind of like the term paper that never, never goes away, a dissertation by, by sense. And so, um, I do see, I, I want to talk to staff about some numbers. We've kind of seen some discrepancy, but we'll talk about that. Offline. Uh, what I wanted to make sure is when we talked about a base budget according to title twelve. Now that we've been successful in at least creating two vacancy fields and one additional. Uh, I'd like to follow up conversation with judicial branch in terms of. Now. Because so much of your money was invested in vacancies, it really had skewed all your expenditure rates. And so controller, we could go back to the judicial branch, um, and working with the committee. So that they, so that the branch completely understands the formula and how we're tracking the data. Um, because I would want something by maybe January, to have somebody's first quarter. This can indicate that, that you're on track. Uh, to spend the dollars or else you're going to need additional supplemental. Uh, this upcoming year or the challenge that we're seeing. Going back to the public hearings is, you know, twenty twenty eight, we expect. Based off of, of projections, a twenty eight million dollar decrease in general fund. And so the question I want to pose to everyone is, then what programs do we plan? We're seeing it this week. Um, there's other options for funding, but you can only spend one dollar once. So, um, that's the, that's what we're leaving to the future. And maybe it would be helpful when we look at base budgets. Um, through the negotiation and using the data. And I think that will streamline the budget process because we've been handling the budget now going from, um. Let's see, six, six months for this committee continuously. And I'm sure if you looked at how much your branch spends on, on the budget process. So what we're trying to do is reduce that time and just come to a formula. And if there's additional funding that's needed, and that's where we'll come together and discuss it in depth and all in monitoring. Um, so before I go to control, I'd also just like to know, maybe if we can have a fix it. Uh, to give you an update or a controller can give you an update on your settlement funding. Um, I'm not quite sure how that's used in your general funds in supplement. Um, sometimes our external or not considered national information funds. So I remember that, um, last thing that it was. Because B I A didn't honor the request for increasing salaries on the judicial side. And, um, so when the financial fund came before the last, uh, budget of finance. I can remember making an amendment that you could use it for capital outlay, but also for salary adjustment. Because I'm looking at the salary adjustment we have to use for general funds, um. That's where I want to see where, how you're going to use that settlement to. To continue to provide a competitive salary for here so good. Um, so also there with this discussion and just back to the floor, give me a high level where we're at. How we can move forward? And if E R P is going to help us, I'm hoping judicial is going to be part of that connection. I'm not sure if your H R. Is going to be part of the E R P, but that would be helpful if we move forward. So it's all based off of data. For the most part, and, and we politicize the budget process because when. Individuals are now forced to be laid off, we're seeing that mental anguish. Um, and so I want to make sure that. That you wouldn't have to basically off either in the future. Right now, we're dealing with vacancies. But, um, we would give you a budget that could help you grow ten, twenty years and that'll help with your facility strategic plan. Because then you'll have the church and now move forward, you can, so all these things, so. So, uh, those are just my comments right now. If someone can help me understand, uh, that would be great. Thank you, Jesus.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, Chairman, so Friday, I will ask the opposite of the controllers to look to the, uh, headship and his on the. That's all right, um, and know the status and the value of that fund. So, Mr. Controller, could you take a look at what it's been to the topers at this time? And also if you could analyze, uh, or produce that, um, maybe a quarterly spreadsheet of how much the data is spent. Out of that, or if it's annual, is that a sure fever? Um, Angela, are you notifying Mr. Riley? Or are you going to look at that?
I, uh, he texted me the balance. I'm trying to find it.
No, yeah, that's very cool. We can talk about that later. Right now, I'm just talking about the amendment, except by not being. Oh, right, yeah. Well, I don't want to do away with this, right?
Okay, so I'll just know that, uh, that by, uh. The key is getting the secret really, if we could, we should have the former had those, uh, information available for the committee. I also recommend, uh, an annual expenditure rate over the past. Three years, uh, just if we calculate that, uh, that's the same amount of data that we used for the company's budget overall. This is the last thirty fiscal years. Um, if you want to get some detail to say, controller, if it's, uh, thoroughly basis, would be helpful, so. Uh, so anyways, uh, extra questions, um, from Chairman, Eric, as of Friday regarding. Uh, question for judicial, judicial branches portion of the legislation. And do you want, or are you?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, so you said he reviewed it, um, oh, great to go. That's just what I think, on the record.
Got it. Thanks, Chairman, Eric, as of Friday. Mr. McKay, I think you also provide. More answers to the question, Chairman, Eric, as of Friday regarding the numbers in this legislation and if they correlate with the data that you have been utilizing. And whether you've justified all the information that we've been previously.
Sure. Thank you, uh, Chair, uh, Parish. Ever since twenty twenty, the National Budget Finals Committee, Councilway of Finance Committee. And, um, intrigued by a chair, uh, right for the question. So. I'll give you, uh. Fun balance for the, uh. So they're funding referring to, uh, I know this question came up. Prior, and I think in hobby when we were contemplating budget, uh, while I've had texts, I'm just trying to find them, so that's. Um, in regards to, um, judicial's spend rate. So first I want to just thank judicial, uh, Shenada. Madam Chief Justice, you know, they're the only, they're actually the only division that came to me. Uh, to look at the data. So we had, well, thank you to you and your team. They had a trial discussion on why this project was short. And, um. She, her and her team provided me, um, of looking at what was primarily. Salary related and the way we calculated our projections based on. What was spent, the expenditures in June. Uh, we did that for all divisions, um, but they did, um, identify and present to me, um. Uh, a situation that might excuse that, um. That projection a little bit. And after, I don't know, an hour of looking at it. Uh, I agree that, um, the vision was in fact short. Um, and that they would have to use their current budget to fund salaries. And then they needed, uh, operating. And I leave their request the last time I saw it is primarily operating. So. How the, how the branch will, will address salary increases. And there were vacancies, I think is a question that we can, I didn't mention it about Chair probably gave them. And they, uh, went through the year, but I know, uh, for this amendment, um. There was, uh, a reasonable, um. Deficit that I guess I stood to go ahead and move forward as, uh, as an amendment to the budget which was passed. Couple of weeks ago, but now is before today. Uh, now, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Hillary, David, thank you, Justice Shirley, uh, Justice Shirley for. Taking some time with your staff, just down with the controller, uh, to answer some questions and ask some questions, Chairman, everybody, getting a bold question.
Oh, it's got, so I was kind of looking at a, a, a. I do want to say, colleagues, I see, um, supporting documents. For a comment at, um. Ten twenty one, this, today, so about forty minutes ago from the private office. And so I opened the document and it's go over with, uh, it's. Like two hundred and sixty pages. So there's no way that I can synthesize the request for information. Um, I can see that the line item of detail message was also included. So that's part of, um. For C F forty four twenty five, that's, I think, included as exhibit A, uh, as exhibit A of this, I'm sorry, exhibit A. Of this document, but it says, um, zero two, uh, one nine dash twenty five. So I do want to go, like, please, there was a lot of success with the budget. But I believe and I understand, uh, President and Executive is, um. Advocating for the judicial branch, um, but what. I want to go down to is. There's really no. Because what I was looking for, because I know it says, we could come together later on this week in the leadership meeting. So what I did was I cleared by the calendar to create where it lies. But there was no leadership meeting to discuss the, the defunding of, of our position. So, um, I appreciate that this legislation is here. I do have some initial concerns about the process of defunding positions. Um, and the budget process, uh, you know, we have a huge end. They are not part of the discussion or any part of the political bargaining. Where I'm concerned because they're receiving fees and are not here advocating for employees. But we also have this sector of those employees that are not covered by our personal R P P M. And, uh, both they work at the whim of the political, um, the elected official. As elected official, we have a code of conduct also. So, um. I think it's important to note then how we, like, if these positions can be identified, so legislative. And for the most part in the Office of Speaker staff and delegate staff. For executive, I'm still not clear across the branch who considered political position. And I'm not sure judicial, they have a similar type of position that that discussion of, um, the cheese, but this. But what's, what I'm saying here as leadership, we have to have a better dialogue when layoffs are going to occur. Um, in the fiscal year twenty five budget, there was layoffs that were proposed and this committee. We fixed and amended, but the division directors did not notify leadership that they were laying off position. So whether you're a permanent employee or a political appointee. Uh, there should be with fundamental law, with, uh, labor codes, with elected official code of conduct. There should be a better way for us to discuss. In the budget process, how these positions will be, um. Funded, and that actually goes back to, um, Seveja or your Department of Human Resources. So what our bid says is that if you're going to have a new position, you need an approved organizational chart. We've never seen an organizational chart, um, for the political position. And so for us, for me, as a delegate, never clear. Because, you know, in terms of accountability and for the budget, so what do you need? So I think an approved organizational part is not just a position. But you have to demonstrate you have a budget to sustain that position. And that's the conversation that, that I would want to have. Um, because from this budget process, I'm seeing. The funding is used to hire the political, um, appointees in positions. But that takes away at, you know, the president's budget. And so. Then is it a point that your office is making a decision to hire instead of operating? Because that's a decision you're making at the office of President Vice President. So what does that conversation look like? Um. And. But they, because I really had to pray about this and think about my values. And I also, I would want to give the same courtesy to executive political appointees. As I would want for legislator. And so I, I could not support, um, a layout. But I also know there has to be accountability when leadership makes a decision to use your budget for more positions. Because that does, you know, they're the balance there than your operation. So, um, I think that's where I'm at now and. Um, I've been willing and speaker can attest to this. Fighting the layoff of my L B A, going back to national nation law, saying. You know, these are, are values, they're not covered under the P P M. And even saying, you know, use my salary to keep my L B A on. Because it's their benefit, it's the insurance. Um, you know, they have loans that are kicking out because of the salary, uh, that they expect to have. And I think we can do so by the way collectively. And maybe that's something where either peace thinking or a neutral entity can help. Executive and legislative come to a point to say. How are we going to move forward with employees, you know, parts of the budget process? Because what I would like is a base budget, the fully funded filled positions, maybe anticipating some vacancy. So that at least through the budget process. Employees will not fear a layout because Mr. Bial had given us a scenario. Um, Mr. Bial was at the early nineties or early two thousands, there was, um. You know, we're going to give a budget construction that we thought, and I think there was going to be like sixty layoffs. And so to rectify that, um, you know. Executives sat together, found any positions, and I really didn't see that from executive with this layout. There were no conversations, just saying, how can we help your assistance transition into another lobby? Like, we value the, um, few or some vacancies that are available. You know, H R, so, so we're offering, that's what I'm saying for leadership to say. Okay, we can't come to an agreement on this budget, at least let's look at their humanity and what can we offer them? Because when those happen with the federal government. You know, it put a lot of people in crisis mode. So I feel like that's similar to what happened to our system. But the federal programs also offered, you know, here are some options. And here are ways that can combat, you know, your, your livelihood being taken away from you. And I didn't see that from executive at all. So that's why I'm going to come back to the theme and say. What should then we offer when someone's laid off? What, what should be that package look like? And are they going to have priority for other positions because they're not, again, they're not covered under the P P M? So they're not automatically given that type. But that's the kind of. Conversation I wanted to hear from the Office of President and Vice President because of the memo. It doesn't, it doesn't state why there was that decision, um. And, and that, that I think concerns me out of, you know. We have a pretty decent budget, it's not the best. But we also let all the programs know, somewhere to the judicial branch. Either work with the committee or controller, have those conversations about your expenditure. And, and it could be changed and tweaked. Because what we have to think about is, of course, the upcoming reduction. And so we can't find our personnel. We're, we're going to be in a challenge here. And, um, my goal is to also look at federal funding and state funding that can be reverted or expired. Because we need to hold these programs accountable on why that funding is being, you know, not maximized. And in this line item, we, so I have raised the issue around indirect costs. Um, that's the federal reimbursement, but it's also understanding the nuance of. Um, the budget, where the money comes from. And we have really good advisors with the office of management and budget, Mr. Bial and his home, and the office of the controller. Um, because we fight for this money, we, we fight for this money, we turn in things and for it to be basically now allocated is, um. Is sending a wrong message to, uh, the federal government. You know, we have Supreme Court cases, the, the federal government has to provide administrative, um, funding. And we're sending a message saying, okay, well, we don't need that. And that's what I also need, is, is, is that the intent? Or what is the discussion when it comes to line item veto? Um, if it's for excess, excessive funding. Then I need to see that, so that we could provide a proper response. And it, it just doesn't involve the organization. So, um, I wanted to take those comments for thought, um, going back to, um, some other reasons. Some other teachings of government governance. And I think in this point of view, we can do better. We tried to do that with the salary increase, with the vacancy pool, um, you know, uh. Our insurance, they're, they're gonna receive some surplus money and they were just gonna dump it in a consulting and we're like, no. You know, work with, work with our employees to see what benefits, you know, what we can do to increase their benefit. And so, um. I, I just have not heard from the union, and what I asked the big question. So my concern is how effective is that collective bargaining agreement? Um. Because committees change, and so administrations change for like, lead something for the employees who are severely, um. Underfunded, severely, um, over capacity, and of course, we all know their facilities are. Are not the structures, um, that they need to, to be right. So on our part, you could, you know, the funding part, that's why we're trying to, to move forward. And, and I understand that it has to be a part of these conversations constantly. So if you could have someone on your team beyond the budget, if I have to call. At least when we're talking about the budget, the, like, your planner or someone, then you'll know where we're needing to spend it in the future. So, um, I just wanted to leave that commentary, although we're not all of the same team. Uh, we might, I don't know, I'm learning how to do this on the. Representatives, uh, so anybody like the public wanna know more about the budget. So, uh, we're, we always talk about either like a podcast, it's a video, they're fronting, like, what, um. And of course, people wanna know their every dollar of their general fund scope and understanding. The complexities of our budget. So appreciated, Chevezer, that's my commentary. Uh, my recommendation for us, how we can move forward beyond, um, this legislation? And how are we gonna get to a two-year budget? Because a two-year budget will also give you enough time and your employees to know that they're gonna be funded. And, um, what programs are gonna move forward. And so as an explanation, we ask Congress to, like, forward fund our programs. And before asking the federal government, I was thinking, well, why don't we do that here? But we should have a one-year buffer, then what we've learned from the CRs and from the fiscal years. And now that FRA is winding down, um. You know, we're seeing, what, we're anticipating four million additional dollars going to be used for personnel or visiting positions. As they taper off of FRA. And what are we gonna do with those employees who are employed with federal dollars? Are we gonna, are we gonna bring them into the general fund? But there's a lot of, like, high-level discussions that leadership needs to consider and take place. Because the committee can't do it here all in the slide. We've been, I don't know, we've dealt with veterans issues on the slide, identifying their carryover chapters. We've done amendments, we've done chapters, for more veterans, have, um, the amendment process. And so I, I think it's also not fair that the committee has to bear the brunt of collectively, um, these critical programs. So. Appreciate all of you being here. I know where the time length is, but I'm also just waiting for the event to happen. So I think that's, that's all, that's all, it's a great time to get there.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if you're, if you're anti whatever your budget. So, I don't know how much more time, or go ahead.
Yeah, though, uh, I got the, yeah, I'm also a kid, I don't know, the patient case, I'm not somebody, I'm not thinking.
Thank you again, committees. I will need immediate. Forecast of our revenue projections. I know we had this earlier discussion. Back in April, along with our former chief of staff, or not, former Chief Justice at that time. Also myself, it's only two direct chiefs that were present during that discussion, so. For, I can only speak for the legislative branch on how to situate. For the next three years, I think one since from April to now. You know, there has to be a deep financial forecasting and phasing, that does have to take place like for exactly where. We adopted twenty twenty six, so twenty twenty seven would be in another important fiscal year. For, for, for the legislative branch, I don't think it's, so right now we have an allocation of at least. Nineteen million overall, but with the light item because we're near like eleven million or ten million. So looking at the, the projection from the past three years and doing that phasing, so next year. We're leaning back with our revenue projection of decreasing amount, so two thousand twenty seven should meet somewhere like in the middle. For me, I'm not. Supporting the idea of, of across all three branches is to go to the whole Turkey at. Two thousand twenty eight, we just say, okay, we just have to automatically cut off twenty eight million. But for me, I think that it does have to be happening in phases. So, and personnel in our structure. Earlier, we talked back into, if you look at our O M B reports, many of our legislative branch, I would say about. Forty percent have, or are near or. Recently amended their plans of operation. And there was also needs to take into account, like if there's amendments that do need to take place for. Almost like restructuring or repurposing, what is the intent of our offices? So that, that does have to take place again within these next few years. Of how our organizational structures and all of our, our goals within the. Our plans of operations for each of the departments. And I, I would say that would go the same for executive branch as well. There also needs to be a way to formalize efficiency. And I mean, this budget process, we, we took a different approach and. We already seem to resist it to change. Through our political tactics. You know, this is not the way it used to be done before. Many of my, are, are even our some colleagues, past delegates, past speakers, now they're always saying, this is not how it was done. Give them what they want or done. But for me, it's looking at, because we are a performance, measured a budget. There is a way, we need to do figure out how do we measure efficiency or productivity? How, how, how is that being related with the numbers that we, we do present? And I think for all of our programs across the board, I'm always. A small percentage of the overall budget for the legislative branch. So there needs to be a, a buy-in from the executive branch, as of today, I have not heard. A direction of how President Nigren thinks of this approach. But if there is, needs to be a leadership meeting that does need to take place on more than then. To re, reflect. What the legislative branch is proposing or moving forth to, however, as of today, we have not. Sat down with the executive branch on how. They are situating that down priest of our, or decrease of our revenues. I did go over prioritization, efficiency. And also, at the same time, leadership also needs to take into approach of diversifying our. Our revenue portfolio. I know there are many changes, there's great opportunities out there. And it doesn't always have to, if you look, I believe our only massive gain of our revenue is coming from investment accounts. If we're just relying on investment accounts, I don't think that we should just put all of our money in there. And just expect that the market will be great. We are looking at political factors at the federal level. And different regulations at the federal level that could potentially impact that. Maybe in F Y two thousand twenty eight, we might even take a bigger hit of our market. And twenty eight million is just a projected amount, what if it's really forty million? It's based on what is currently happening now at the federal government. So a, a lot of, there's, I guess, a lot of factors that we do need to take into account, but. I do urge nail for standing committees to also start working towards diversifying our, our revenues. Either if it's in businesses or ventures that we do need to get into. And I, I believe that the, the, the branch has that capability right now, and then their amount of their five hundred twenty four million dollars to. Explore that opportunity and providing that plans to leadership, I mean, I would be proud and willing to sit down to see. What, what has been done within the past three years to really look at our revenue. Or what has been the ideas coming from, you know, many of our departments that have the immediate. Responsibilities and duties to do that. So that's just a, a quick glimpse of. My, my take on how to plan out for the next few years. Of the factor of decreasing our revenue or twenty eight million, so. But I can only speak for the legislative branch, but again, there is that request to both of our. Branch chiefs, you know, the, the branch chief today, but. That is a request that we do need to have and sit down and actually talk about this. I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Justice.
Good morning, once again, I would like to just basically say. That I came into this budget process. When it was in the midst of hearing from, from the. Hearing. On our proposed budget to the law's order and then also to budget finance, so. What was discussed and what was planned, as in all budget sessions. It starts way back in the spring going. And then based on the budget. Even not at the issue, the area, and obviously based on our title of seven. The natural, these are the services that are nine baby that are provided. To the judicial branch and in order to meet those services. This is where we, we have needs in the various areas. Advocate for, for those situations. As it is right now, judicial branch has ten judges, I don't know, associate justice. That are currently serving on the bench. We have courts all over and then we also have. A hearing officer, then with each of these courts, you have staff. At each of these hopes that help in processing. The, the, the proceedings, the hearings and so forth. So a lot of our goals, strategic goals is based upon making sure that our available people. Are provided the, the help that they need and their legal issues. Whether it's through peace making or whether it's through. A court process and the whole court processes, so that's where a lot of our, our services are. Our, our father in terms of how our funds are being used of once it's appropriated by the council. And so I just want to say that we are in the midst of, of talking about. About cases and needing those cases and processing those cases. And what we're looking for is ensuring that the services are efficient and that it's moving forward. And that the other part is at the same time, we have to look into our resources, our human resources. We have. Judges positions that are needed. And that will help to, in my thinking, to alleviate some of that case load. And then also help in meeting those legal needs and trying to look at other ways of providing those services. To the people and a lot of it is based upon looking into different various projects creatively. Of ways to, to meet the people's needs and then at the same time, the court is. Is working to work with the. With the judicial conduct issue with respect to the, the applications for these various judges of positions. As well as the associate justice and chief justice, so. But at the same time, they're also a, a separate independent body that is out there. That reviews those applications that are. Based upon their, their qualifications. And then based upon how they see the particular applicant as it's moving forward, so. Those are things that I have to think into consideration is making sure that we have the necessary physicians. Funded and making sure that, that the, these physicians are there so that the. The, the cases could have continued to move forward and, and, and in all of this. Services that is being provided to the, to the people. I also have to rely on the, the, the staff. Our, our court administrators and the, the court clerks, because they're very much in. In part of the, the legal process in, in making sure that a petition is filed, that it. Goes through the internal process to the point where it's. It, it becomes ready for, for a hearing once all of the. Services are done and so forth, so there is a lot of, of points in between. That people play a part in their role as far as providing the, the legal services. You mentioned that what is our plan for, for the remainder of the years? And I believe that we're, we're striving towards looking at our process. By reviewing our process, we are reviewing our in-stopping and how we can. We're trying to work ways to see how we can move these cases along. With the limited number of judges. Recruiting is very much a part of our, our initiative that we would like to continue. In bringing forth new, newly qualified judges. As well as staff attorneys and so forth, so those are things that I'm looking at in terms of. Making sure that the, that there is an efficient delivery of services to the people. And then not only that, but besides the, the courts, we also have our administrative arm. Of, of the, of the branch, which is an administrative office of the court that also has to be. Up to par in terms of making sure that the, the services in terms of. Of the. Process of documents are, are very much, I mean, taken care of. And so those are things that I'm, I'm looking at and a lot is also dependent upon, on. With the, the process. Of, of our judges as well as our chief justice. This has the position as it is right now is perfectly just as much as the associate justice position. That is they can, who currently are a three justice court at the Supreme Court level, so. Those are things that I have to take into consideration in the recruiting process. In going out and contacting various. Organizations and law, law schools and so forth to see if there are interested people that are out there that are willing to. Get a legal career or a natural condition, so that's where we're at, but we're hoping to. Look at our expenses and making sure that this are. Profit is spent for purposes intended for and making sure that. That whatever we're going to be submitting to the. To the legend finance committee is going to be based upon the, the obligation that we have as. As the, as the. The organization or the branch that provides that legal services that's sent to the amount of the people. And then making sure that, that. The, the, the quality of that services is going to be efficient and making sure that. People's needs are met, having their legal issues resolved or addresses one or another. So that's where we're at, I'm sure that as time goes by, we will. In you to provide you. A request with respect to our funding as time goes by, so that's my, my take at this.
Okay, thank you, Assistant Chief Justice, I'll just be here currently at the office of the president, because it defines to answer the question. But I just wanted to mention that, because we're going to be asked, who was in the room, who's responding to these questions? And we do need a plan, because of all the numbers being produced by everyone, there's no plan. And I was just, I was just looking at the controller and where you can find that information is a budget instruction manual. In the, in the budget instruction manual, we have approved, the budget finance committee publishes, works with O M B to publish. The revenue projections and the reason why there was an increase between F Y twenty five and F Y twenty six. Isn't even because our revenues in our investment market. Was an exponential year, that's not even the reason why we had an additional cushion this year. The reason why is because Sean McCain, the controller, decided to add the special revenue fund interest this year of thirty million dollars. The last time that was done was F Y twenty three. So it, it's an accounting mechanism that gave us the, the available balance to, to. Have that cushion, but. We're not planning for the future, we're just thinking about right now, we're just thinking about this budget, but when you look at the decline, actually it's F Y twenty seven. So in F Y twenty seven, including these dollars, there's still a decline of ten million dollars this year. There's, there's going to be a greater decline in F Y twenty eight. So I want to point that out because it's a real question that we have to consider for F Y twenty seven. We're going to continue the decline even though this year we added that little cushion, so the, the, the client is going to continue to, to move downwards. If we're not going to take that, any steps sourcing revenues. You can see that in F Y twenty six and F Y twenty five, if you want to look at that, that's all public record. So members of the committee, is anyone else have any questions? Bill Shulman, Ozzy, you're very ready to offer your amendment?
Good afternoon again, I do, I did work on amendments and I. I know that our legal counsel still needs time to work on several, but there are two that will leave it. What I do want to say is two of them will be legislative concerns that are ready. And hopefully my intent is to strengthen this legislation. The other thing is I wanted to ask. VP, Mr. President, President and Vice President. There is one amendment that is executive office cap cause and. What I want to ask you, freshman, is. Some of the things I think committees have heard is that there are many. Budget revisions that end up into the office of O P E. And I'm hoping that the comments in the back, there's a very heavy comment in the back by. President Nigren, and I haven't had time to look at the whole thing, and I, I will. After today, I'll prepare and make sure I look through it before we meet with Matt Nobby, and I'm not sure which. Delegate is going to introduce this amendment, it's a new amendment for the executive branch. And I wanted to ask the freshman about if you would be in support of a clause that has future budgets increase. To the O P E office, nonetheless, it's pretty good with counsel. And. I just want to know, is now a good time to have, have fairness and talk to all part of the branch just? That would be my wish, because I want to be sure I'm having some of that language until the amendment I want to prepare, so that would be my question. The other thing is, like I said, I haven't had time to look through the whole entire document. But I don't know who's going to introduce it, there looks to be three mistakes, just off the top. I'm looking at, one, I know in the legislation there is, please counsel which. So two fifty. You've counsel line item in, in the letter, there's number five, the business unit. It's one, three, zero, two, one, I know in. When we moved over, it didn't have a business unit number, that there's an amount of two eighty nine, two thirty nine. Which I think is in the legislation and that might also be included in this possible amendment that I'm going to come tomorrow. So I don't know if we're adding more into that. The other place I saw state would be, let, you know, letter number two. Item thirty two and thirty four, the D P M budget, same business unit and the amount, both of them are the same exact amount, amount of three. Forty, three, forty four, four hundred and forty nine. So like I said, I haven't had time to look at the back of all of the, the budget numbers to see if we're the exact same. So I don't know if that's possible places where possible revenues, we got over to another business. So I just want to bring that to the workers proposing this amendment, they need to arrange it, should be, you know, do. That'd be my. But can we go ahead and. Have the amendments written to the record, but I do want to make sure I give a yes or no from.
All right, and then for additional information to Vice President, I'm sorry, this video is very aware of that, so to be. There are requests from other departments throughout the entire nomination that gave requests, because they, they, so that is also. A part of the questions, I mean, delegates, Sharon, Ozzy, exactly regarding any budget revision or modification. So as you're clearly included, our advice about my special conference.
Thank you, Chair Hirsch and Prodosianos, Vice President. The best of my ability, my. Your question is regarding to budget revisions and modifications during the fiscal years by. Then the executive branch, if we should put a cap on those amount of revisions or see amounts of money for the revision. Okay, so as mentioned by Chair Harris, she indicated that as far as there, there are divisions within the executive branch that. Have to do revisions in regards to payments that need to be made. Most likely from previous administrations or previous fiscal years. Or is it fact that something came up that, that year and, and exactly would be. For urgency management, this past year, we had a couple of incidents that happened that we had to. Work with our other divisions to help the needs that were needed at that time, so something like that had happened. I would have to say that any unnecessary modification of the budget. Shouldn't be happening and there should be only in purposes of. It helping the people directly. I mean, that's what we're all here for, is to help our people directly. I, I haven't seen any budget revisions as far as in my office and the office of the Vice President. Just recently, after speaking with Shemano President Nigren back in July. He asked me to help him work with all of education and all of health. And during this process right now, I have been working with departments in my education, in regards to their budgets. And signing off on their budget promise, that the first time, this is the first time I've heard of that as the Vice President of the whole nation. And so. That, that would be something that I would do, that, I don't know. How special we asked from this.
Thank you, Vice President, I'm sorry, I think speaker currently. I think that really, that your responses really helps put the practical context into the questions that we have because. We do have oversight over the office of management, budget, and office of the controller, and we need to opt in to, and also. Also, the auditor general might often learn more about. Corrective action plans, the division of economic development and other cap, there's nations actually, there's several. Different departments, the nomination fair stations, and there's no movement in terms of mediate that. So we're concerned because when we propose a budget as a council, we're taking thorough look at all. The, all, but it's not just executive, not just legislative, not just judicial. But these amendments, I think that today that committee is considering. Our overall learning trends, and it's not just their chapters, it's happening in central parts as well, and as they're concerned because. If the executive branch has multi millions of dollars to fix these, these corrective action plans. Then, or even the legislative or judicial, if they have millions of dollars. To access to, to many of them, corrective action plans shouldn't they? We expect this of our chapters, we've probably seen, I don't know how many corrective action plans are chapters, but with the budgets they have. They're expected to correct their mistakes within two years, within a certain timeframe, and then they'll get a third try, and so. You know, if you're creating this expectation for the chapters to need to fix the issues in their communities. Then, then you also have to take a look at what are we doing in terms of our, so. Thank you, Chairman James, for being here, good to see you. All right, Delegate Sharon, Ozzy, would you like some motion that's safe?
Chairman, the budget finance committee, you have amendment number one to legislation number. Zero, two, one, nine, dash, two, five, number one reads as follows, add after two S dash forty four, dash twenty five, exhibit I. Exhibit I one, one, exhibit I one, legislative concern, and each office programs and division receiving additional funds under legislation zero, two, one, nine, dash, two, five. Shall submit a report to the Office of the Controller and the Budget Finance Committee reporting its expenditure plan for each office program or division receiving additional funding. The report shall be submitted to the Office of the Controller and the Budget Finance Committee within the thirty calendar days of the effective date of this act. B, all executive offices or programs receiving the funding increase under this legislation shall submit monthly expenditure report to the. Budget Finance Committee and the Office of the Controller for the duration of F Y twenty twenty six, beginning with the month following the enactment of this. An act of this act, two, reauthorization, the two authorization to Office of Legislative Council, the Office of Legislative Council is authorized to make. The necessary revisions of legislative concerns exhibit to include the legislative concern above, the Office of Legislative Services is permitted to make. Addits to conform with the language of the legislative concern in this amendments to the language in an existing legislative exhibit. Three, we number relates to sitting paragraph sections and exhibit as necessary and appropriate office of legislative services. Three, we never related to sitting paragraph sections and exhibit as necessary and appropriate, the Office of Legislative Services, the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to effect a full edit until the recapitulation total. Related to this amendment and an exhibit to implement the nomination passes on ten days, and if there's any assistance, any other matters, most others are being confirmed to this amendment.
Thank you, um Mr. Um Taki for reading that to the record, Delegate Shalana, would you confirm that, which he's thinking. All right, you can over, and then vote for the Delegate Shalana, there's a second. Second, for Delegate Lester Yancy, over to the Budget Finance Committee, are there any questions to the amendment? Oh, this is really all the vice that has completely on this amendment.
Good morning, good morning. Good afternoon, Chairman. Uh members of the committee and everybody that's listening and you know, Campbell. Um I just wanted to point out. To the committee that. In the current legislation, there is already a legislative concern. That's very similar to this. In the legislative concern, that's already in the resolution. Actually has a little bit more detail to that. In other words, it's size, division, department, program, venue, number, object code, funding amount. This Davis of the funds, description of actual expenditures, timelines for expenditures. And and so forth. So. The key difference, however, is that. The legislation or the resolution, excuse me, the L C that's there. Will be compiled and before the order. And Delegate Yazi's amendment. Speaks about expenditure part monthly. So, members of the committee, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yazi. I also, this this language appears, there are also the case just to any. The other one covers the global budget, but it could be less in chair. Because presently, the showmen, they that definitely efficient. That happens, so I mean, there's. That we want, they really didn't need to do the budget anyways, right? So for the like, uh, let's have us, I think, the first services.
Right, I think we should be all very weak and votes, uh pointing out those differences um. Also, in a subset of concern, it pertains to legislation two one nine two five. Uh so I think that um this amendment today. Is particular to any additional funds that are being added uh to the conference of budget over stored in some cases to the line. Just the president, so uh all I did to the committee, see if they have questions, uh thank you, Mr. Yazi. Members of the Budget Finance Committee, are there any questions?
Oh, I just want to. Uh thank you, uh appreciate the amendment, uh it's certainly a way for us to start. Monitoring and understanding how the general funds um. I'm going to define aren't manipulated, uh so controller, how will the E R P? You know, we got to clean it now, but let us know if you can have the E R P will assist. Uh if we could get a monthly expenditure report as a government. Um body of an allocation and as audit committee, you know, all of the oversight should have thirty to that information too. Because they're intimately connected with their program. And so I think it would be, you know, because we talked about committee priorities. Then the committee itself could start prioritizing, because what they said, um budget and finance are exhibit key. And that was over one hundred million unmet needs, like that's unrealistic. So we have to figure out a better way for as council to start looking at this funding. And um share that information, uh maybe maybe could start reporting. To the to the oversight so that they can understand um the process uh for accountability. And um what we're trying to do to anticipate uh. This future revenue shortfall, but also looking at um our investment into like community projects. So were we going to continue to uh invest in vacancies or we're going to move to start investing in in like water and other. Um projects that are communities asking for.
The agenda that I showed everyone, that's right, it's true, the national government chooses the budget for vacancies. There's no law that says that we have the budget for vacancies. Um, Mr. Controller, would you like to add some comments?
You, Chairman Hirsch, who's a committee, check for a good uh uh question. Uh so the new E R P will actually give real time access via dashboard, which we go so. Minutes, the oversight will be able to see this, just by. Uh we're actually building reports that will be available to. Every divisions, the delegates to see exactly where the budgets we expect how. So it'll be a lot more transparent with with this and won't be paper based, so you won't have to wait. For the controller, kind of the spreadsheet or. See. And I think uh. Any that actually the question.
Maybe the judge would give. Then to also add, did he choose to budget for the agencies, the bid governors, how you. You should have, how you decide how to budget for a. Um Chairman, this is right.
And I I just have a follow up in terms of comments, um the northern agency did pass a supporting resolutions. Wanted to ask what they're talking, has that been something that, or I can follow up with the agency officers? If that resolution um was completed, I just want to make sure that the committee goes, you know, I represent. Uh northern agency on the Budget Finance Committee, and they're supporting uh this amendment, which, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, yes, the office is speaker here, and to talk about the resolution, and the least committee can submit section of the legislation. Uh Mr. Taki.
Uh Chairman Chairman of the Budget Finance Committee, the Northern Agency Council did submit. This comment, and it is on the first report of the Internet Public Review Summary, it is number three on the 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 comic page. So it is noted already.
Thank you, Chairman, for the record, the Northern Agency Resolution is already. Um the first we're in the middle of discussing, amendment number one, does anyone else have any questions? Here now, let's go to roll call vote, Delegate Shalana, how do you vote? Delegate Shalana on the screen, Chairman, this is right, maybe vote. Chairman, this is right, you go screen, unless you're out, so how do you vote? Delegate, unless you're out, you go screen. Who's had three members voting in the board, two members excuse myself, not voting, motion carries on number one. Members of Budget Finance Committee, do you have any more questions to legislation, two, one, nine, two, five?
To be told, he said, did he talk to you, is that how he did?
No.
That's fair. How this, okay. No, my checkpoint is not refused, it's not yet. Anything from the office is is. It's not working, not of operations.
All right, uh so for our I T department, if you just stay like that to share point, um that's how you're doing this. Issues this morning, but uh the comment regarding the Northern Agency Resolution, that's a part of the D S online on the website. Members of the Budget Finance Committee, does anyone else have any questions to the legislation, two, one, nine, two, five? All right, hearing that at this time, let's go to a roll call vote. All right, any closing comments? While we, while we're there for that, oh, here, I'll recognize Delegate, and I'll go to our sponsor for any closing comments, so. The next Chairman Vince Stink, Delegate Dr. Andy Menz, Delegate R V Time, Deputy Delegate R V Mitchell. Can I have anyone? Should we talk to each of those? All right, and we have several delegates coming called, Delegate Ains, that want to call, that want to call, and group. Uh Delegate Sean, also want to call, Delegate Herman Daniels, right here, right, good morning, Delegate Herman. Uh Herman Daniels Junior, in for me on the call. We have several members of my council listening today, thank you all for being here. Speaker Chris Curly, we have the closing moments, um if you're interested.
Yeah. Uh thank you again, committee, for considering this legislation today, and then going back to. Uh some of the supporting uh resolutions from our chapters and agency committees, uh they are attached, I just thought uh. Part of the, part of copies this now, so we do have my home chapter, it's line of final chapter as. As a supported reservation through the executive chapter. Um all of the Northern National Agency Council resolutions attached, and also non-regional council. Is also attached, and then also number five, Mexican Water Chapter does uh be supporting regulation as well. Uh so there are no opposing comments of the amount, there are recommendations from Office of the President, Vice President. As myself, I I do need to go back to access, I did get that comment uh as of early this morning, because. I really need to go back and look at this, thank you again, although we don't see, uh she might even have any closing comments from both of our. Uh Vice President and our faculty dresses.
My closing comment to the chair and members of the Asian Finance Committee. Uh thank you, I give all this to some committee again, to help you glory, and maybe this request for. In our case, the branch, but I'm not saying the judicial branch.
There's more?
Again, requesting for your support um for our. Uh courts and A O C, and the court, Office of Chief Justice to continue to operate. And that uh. A request for the operating house is very much needed at this time. So. And that's it. And of course, the. Um and the fact of the, we very hard, that is to carry out this, this is. Again, thank you for your community support, and we can have the last appropriations and. Uh I want to feel that this one also continue with your support as well.
Again, long, long, I wish I do, I think, for the Budget Finance Committee members, both. Um our goal, council delegates. And so obviously, you know, guys uh online and on YouTube. Speaker of the National Nation, point of counsel. Crystal Curly, all of K D, uh the should be National Nation Legislative Branch, Executive Branch, and. Our Judicial Branch employees. She, um then, she, and she, so the. And just to make sure. A A R D, to make sure and ensure that the number one, in the forefront of our minds, and I think that.
Hi, thank you, Chair, committee, yeah, that'll be our closing comments.
Thank you, Speaker Curly. I think it's it's pretty amazing that, well, we have three of our leaders of the branches who are all. Uh also female, which is really inspiring to me as a young person, so it can go off for. Your service and duties in the nation, so. Uh Chairman, this is right, it's not a, it's not a.
Uh yes, so our committee, uh we receive documents, those are two kinds of cases there. Um I'm going to ask the people, you mentioned in your comments that the digital branch is the only. Brand from the reason that has. Come to your office and understand these, um okay. If you just give us like a high level of what we're looking for, um. Like for grid governance in our audit, uh I asked a question for our auditors, explaining what you consider direct services. And primarily, it's the question that we get from chapter. Is putting their direct services, because that definition has been, you know, manipulated. So I think also a council, we need to respect that. The council is what services are we providing, and how do we say it's valuable? So if you help me um that high levels, and I think uh secret council, we can develop a strategic plan. So that people know what we're going forward, like I'm going to be forward with the business. To the criminal code titled seventeen. Uh we're going to move forward with appropriation of, we're going to move forward with um procurement. And so I think that also informs him, so he's committed to identify what legislative fixes are working on. And how that can be accomplished, so this is on here, rather than just, I mean. Anybody can debate, there's work, like what is focused so that these have, these are the needs of our people. That they're asking for right now, but can we hold it and then I'm ready to vote.
Well, yeah, thank you, um. That's your probably, um. What was it, committee? Chair Barry. Chief Business, I mean. I think in in general, um Madam Chair, this, I think, I'll just kind of speak broadly, there's. I I'm actually, as as the accountant of the C P A, I'm actually really happy. Um that the committee has a very. Really, but I mean, all this comes down to is a danger, I think, this isn't a political. We looked at the numbers, we we saw what's being spent, and I believe adequate funding was given. And I know to to operate the same way we're operating today, and I believe that the whole idea is then to have. Divisions come back and ask for money, case of performance. So the whole idea of direct funding, I know it gets. Frankly, this 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 communicated. Um and I think what needs to continue to happen, um this weekend with the auditors and. You know, other C P A events that have the rest of the guys, it's just a focus on who becomes. Direct services to, you know, the allocation people, and then I think. From an accounting standpoint, when you really get the differences between direct and indirect cost of the programs. Um there is, we kind of interpret it the same way, um from our own. Our own funds, the general funds, et cetera, and so funding. You know, programs that are defined as indirect by the federal government because of. Let's be honest, that.